I'd like to call the Board of Public Hearing. Frank, please show all Board members present minus Mr. DePacchio. And the only one who can do it is the 2021 Corporation Budget Presentation.
Thank you for the question. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Well, I wanted to congratulate you because you're now on the way of approving a budget for the 2021 calendar year. So tonight's purpose of this meeting is to accept from the public their opportunity to express any comments about the budget that was presented to you earlier in September. What was presented to you was the appropriations for rainy day in an amount of 1.3 million. That does not require a levy to be generated or tax rate. Your debt service will be advertising at $21,266,889 with a tax levy being advertised at $21 million with a tax rate of .6836. Your school pension fund will be advertised at $1,265,134 with an advertised levy of $1,454,993 with a tax rate of .0474. Your education fund will be advertised at $65,197,771. There is not an advertised levy because you know those funds come from the state. That is our main instructional fund with no tax rate. That is driven by enrollment. And your operations fund will be advertised at $20,449,303 with an advertised levy of $16,631,924 with a tax rate of .5414 with a total advertised rate of .1.2724. As I explained in the short shot, we always advertise high because the factor that moves is your assessed value. According to the state results, which people will also be presenting tonight, we will to let you know that they have seen a trend in assessed value going up. When we do have our study done by Policy Analytics, which aired by November, remember we talked about some things that influence the increase in your property values and we talked about the certain metrics that happen. So at this time, if somebody from the public would like to make a comment on the 2021 budget, I'm prepared to take those comments tonight. Having none of this touched on, I recommend the Board make a motion to go ahead and close this public meeting.
Or are there any questions to comment? Or any motion for a change? Thank you, Ms. Perkins. One second. Thank you, Mr. Plight. All those favor the President, the public, the highest. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you, ma'am. All right, it is 7:03, but I'm going to pass already. I called to order a regular board meeting Tuesday, October 13th. Frank, please show all the members present minus Mr. DePacchio. If you'd please stand and join us to the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no awards for this meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Or may I have a motion? Thank you, Dr. Plight. The plan has a second. Thank you, Ms. Gilkey. Questions or comments about the agenda? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next meeting, or next item on the agenda, the approval meeting is from previous meeting. We will have session on lines one and a regular meeting on lines eight. Or may I have a motion?
I would rather approve the regular and work session minutes as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Plight. Or may I have a second? Second? Thank you. Ms. Perkins. I'm trying to do this. Questions to comment? All those in favor, per give the minutes. From our work session and regular meeting on lines one and nine respectively, signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
I'm sorry, I need to say I was not present for that.
Next, we have no public comments on the agenda. We do have two presentations tonight. First one is Steve's presentation, which one we want to keep on.
Chad Blacklock, Matt Schumaker from Steeple here to present. Yep, I mean, that's fine. Well, good evening, everyone. Like Marcus said, my name's Matt Schumaker. My colleague, Chad Blacklock. We are with Steeple. We've been around the board a few times now. We're here to talk tonight about the proposed 2020 bond issue. And really, this is just a continuation of the overall long-range planning that has happened over the past 24 months or so. So this is kind of the second phase of the facility plan that was put together, talked with in the community meetings to get their feedback. I'm going to run through some slides. We're really talking about the tax rate analysis. How is this going to fit into your overall tax rate and debt portfolio to meet your financial needs while still hitting the tax rate goals that the administration has talked about over the course of the last 12 to 24 months? As I roll through this, it's a lot of information. If there are questions, feel free to stop me. If I say something that doesn't make sense, or I'm just talking too fast, you'll be able to tell me and be quiet, and I can answer any questions that you have. So the first thing that we always look at, and you guys have seen this before, is what does your outstanding debt payments look like as of today? And as a school that is looking to do a facility plan, upgrade some of those facilities, this is a debt portfolio or debt payment schedule that we like to see, and that is descending. Your highest payment, you can see, was in 2019, and then it just drops continually until there's a big cliff out in 2028. Again, this tells us that there is going to be room to fit in new debt, new payments, without impacting the overall payment schedule. So the first page was your debt payments. This page is a projection of your tax rate. Normally, those correlate pretty quickly, but the way that the budget has changed, the budgeting process has changed in the state, from the State House, sometimes there are a little bit of discrepancies, so if this doesn't match exactly, that's the reason for that. But you can see, this is a history and a projection of where your tax rate was and is likely to go. Back in 2019, this little tax rate of $1.13, down to 97 cents this year. And again, this is a snapshot of today. If you do nothing else, this is what your tax rate projects to look like out through 2028. The color, the different color in the bars are just your tax rate funds, your operations, your pension, and your debt service funds. Here are the parameters of the proposed bond issue that you will see in a resolution in two weeks that will come before you. The proposed parameters are a maximum borrowing amount of $22,100,000, estimated cost of issuance $350,000, leaving available proceeds for hard and soft project costs of $21,750,000. I will note, we're always very conservative with the cost of issuance, just because assessed $350,000 doesn't mean that's what it's going to be. It's likely to be lower. We always like to show conservative figures. Estimated interest expense of $8.5 million, the max annual lease rental payment in 2021 of $8 million, the max annual lease rental payment in remaining years of $2 million. We're going to talk about that a little bit. That's such a big gap. We're going to explain why we're doing that the way we are. And then most importantly, the estimated impact, the tax rate impact from these bonds is expected to be zero when looking at the 2019 total tax rate. Again, there was a little bit of a dip this year, but I know Marcus has seemed to have been very forthright in trying to do all of these projects with a total tax rate now to exceed $1.10, so again, we're comparing that against the 2019 rate. So if we go to the next page, and Laura talked a little bit about this, the biggest factor in computing your tax rate, really, there's two. One is the levy, how much money do you need? But the second is your assessed valuation. As your assessed value grows, that's a really, really good thing because it can lower your tax rate or allow you to do more things under that same tax rate. And when Laura does her budget, you have to tell the state what you're anticipating for a debt service payment the following year, so that you can come up with the tax rate. The problem with that is historically, in Clark County, the assessed valuation has not been available for the next year when she's putting those numbers together. So whereas the most of the rest of the state already has their certified net assessed value for 2021, Clark County has not released that. So it becomes very tricky to tell the state what you want your payment to be to hit a certain tax rate without knowing that figure. So in having conversations, we thought setting a very high number for next year in case we see, you know, really large assessed value growth would give the school a flexibility to still hit their tax rate needs. So the $8 million was based off of your AV growth 14%. I know that that is extremely unrealistic and not likely to happen. To Laura's earlier point, we have seen some very large unexpected AV growth throughout the state. So we wanted to set a number high enough that would allow Laura to go back in and update all of those numbers at the end to still hit the tax rate goals. Last thing we want to do is set an artificially low number, see a lot of AV growth, and not be able to hit that tax rate. So all of this is part of that long-range planning to make sure that we build in enough flexibility that when we get the AV, hopefully it's any day now, who knows, that we can come back in and amend that number based on the final results of the assessed value.
Let me ask a question. You're saying that Clark County is the only one that has a permanent?
Not the only one. Floyd did not have theirs either. I know those two, there may be a couple others, but 90% of the state has had their numbers for weeks now.
Okay.
So while we set that first year at $8 million, and we set the remaining years at $2 million, again, just to be open and honest to everyone, you know, we're not going to have an $8 million annual payment, you know, for the whole 20 years. That's just not realistic. So we wanted to make sure that we didn't lower that in future years. This next page, we have modeled a payment next year based on your previous five-year average of your AV growth rate. I can't see the top. I think it was like 4.39% is the AV growth that you've seen over the last five years. So this is more realistic than what we think the payment type be. This would have a payment of $5 million in 2021, again, to hit that targeted tax rate of $1.10. If your AV flatlines, that's probably unrealistic too, but you have the ability to come in and lower that payment. So the 2021 payment is going to be tailored to the penny to get you to the $1.10. Again, it's been specified in all of the community meetings. Even after the payment in 2021, you can see your tax rate again projected to drop, which is a great position to be in with the facility study and the facility needs that Greater Clark has. All of the final lease payments will be finalized when the bonds are sold. We're not planning to sell bonds until we have an assessed value because, again, we want to make sure that we're hitting the financial goals that Marcus and his team have laid out over the course of all of these meetings. So while this is more realistic, we won't know what it's actually going to look like until we have the assessed value. Questions on that at all? So while you're approving these parameters, you're not locking anything in, you're just locking in the maximum payments in those years. They will be set at a lower number once we get the assessed value.
Now, you guys have done a lot of work with Policy Analytics. You know, when they're done with their study of us, you know, could you talk a little bit about what they'll be able to project out over the next 10 years?
Yeah, so Policy Analytics, they are fantastic. They work with a lot of schools, a lot of really municipalities throughout the state. And what they're really good at is taking a deep dive into your individual tax base and then being able to come up with a projection of what they expect your assessed value to do in the future. And that plays a huge role in our analysis because it gives us more up-to-date numbers when we're projecting out three, four, five, 10 years. It becomes very, very difficult when we're just kind of guessing on future assessed values. They can come in, take a much more granular look at your tax base, add certain projections, and come back and say, you know, over the course of the next 10 years, we expect growth to be this on annual basis. It's probably going to come in and be a little bit different, but they do such good work, and that's been proven over the last several years with other schools, libraries, municipalities, and really digging into that tax base to figure out what they think that growth will be moving forward. Obviously, this whole time period throws a potential rich in that with a potential recession, what, how is this going to come out of it? But they are very, very good and very knowledgeable at putting together some of the assessed value growth trends. So this is the same chart that we showed previously, but this reflects the proposed issuance of the 2020 bonds. Again, nothing is locked in, but this is what it might look like, again, hitting the desired tax rate of $1.10 in 2021, but then leaving, you know, ample space for any future facility needs that a school might need. The last thing we want to do is lock you in to that tax rate for many, many years without giving you the ability to stay flexible and address your needs in a timely fashion to still hit your tax rate goals. So I think this sets up well for the future needs of school corporation.
Thank you, sir. Or are there any questions to comment? Mr. DePacchio, anything else?
I'll just touch on timing real quick, so there's still a couple steps that need to get through on the board level, but Thomas can talk better about this than I can, but everything is set up to be ready to potentially issue bonds the week of November 10th. Not that they definitively will be sold, but we want to be in a position where we can just gauge the market. Obviously, that is right after the election, so how will things look? But it gives us enough flexibility, gives us several weeks left in the calendar that if we don't think that week looks good for whatever reason, we can always come back to the following week. But we always like to get things ready as soon as possible, so again, we can look at what the market, how it feels that week, and if it feels good, we'll go, and if not, we can always wait a couple weeks until things seem better.
I'm looking at this chart right here, and I'm looking at the operations fund, and it's climbing, which I would expect it to do based on inflation, up until 2029, and it flattens out. And it looks like it stays flat all the way out to the end of the chart. What's the rationale behind that?
So this is something that will be updated on a yearly basis. So there was a change when things got coalescing, the operations fund. The operations fund is now pegged, the growth in the operations fund is pegged to what's called the maximum levy growth motion. So the state sets this number on a yearly basis for the following year. Next year, the growth is going to be 4.2%. So the school is able to take 4.2% more money in their operations fund. Where we can see the tax rate going up is if your assessed value growth does not keep up with that. So for schools that are very stable in their AV base and are not growing, if you think about it, if you're taking 4% extra money on a yearly basis, but your base AV is not growing, your tax rate's growing by that same proportion. Now, we know you're going to grow some, and this is where Policy Analytics, their information, again, plays a huge part in our projections. If they come in and say, hey, we expect rate to grow somewhere in that 3.5% to 4% range in the future, you're going to see that operations fund tax rate stay extremely steady. But it goes back to what I said earlier, we're always very conservative at this point in some of these projections, that we want to make sure essentially your tax rate is a worst-case scenario. So if your AV does flatline or grows at a very slow pace, we want to make sure we're not too aggressive with the debt payments. So if we assume, hey, you know, you've grown at that 4.39% over the last five years, let's just project you're going to grow that for the next 10 years. If we model payments off of that and you don't grow, that's where you're going to see the tax rate start to increase. You guys are in a great position of issuing bonds, you know, annually or every two years. We can refresh these numbers and make sure we only lock you in for the next year when we have that available information, and then we'll come back on a yearly basis and update that. This is just us being extremely conservative and projecting out your tax rate. That's a great question.
You know, as a traditional budgeting practice, I do analyze that growth. That's, and Policy Analytics will even be more hopeful with that because I try to take that max levy in the operations because, you know, we did have, I mean, we have to operate. But I also have to take into consideration circuit breaker as well. So all of that plays in when I'm developing that potential rate. And so they set it at $1.10, that does also give us a little bit of flexibility to say where are we at because of the circuit breaker coming in, so we can determine which funds will hit the rate to get us to $1.10. So it's all, altogether, a handshake that I have to look at. So traditionally, what I want you to know is that I do try to capture the max that we can without escalating our rate and penalizing us for the borrowing. So that helps.
And most likely, you're going to see that dark blue line, you know, when you get five years down the road, be probably fairly flat, which is going to allow you to pay these funds off in a much quicker fashion and save a lot of interest. Again, we don't want to lock you into that aggressive payment schedule without knowing the full set of information, so it'll just be annually updated when we get better and better information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentation is Exflation Building Corporation Structure and Purpose. Mr. Thomas Peterson.
I wanted to take an opportunity to discuss the structure of financing a little bit. It's always easy to get into a situation where bond lawyers speak what we call bondies and expect civilians to necessarily always follow along with exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it. In the state of Indiana, a little history background lesson, the state made a very bad investment decision back in the 1840s and invested heavily in canals about the time that the railroads came in, and the state went bankrupt. And at that point, they adopted a new constitution, which is similar to one we're working with today, that prohibits the state from entering into any direct debt and prohibits any governmental unit from entering into debt that exceeds 2% of its assessed valuation. Those are direct debt, which you'd normally hear called general obligation bonds. Now, what came of that is that as the state developed, became more sophisticated, that did not provide a capacity for borrowing large enough to meet the needs of municipalities and school systems because the cost of a new school building would exceed that limitation as a borrowing amount. The bond lawyers at the time, back in the 1950s, then came upon a structure called building corporation leases, where a building corporation would own the facility and built it and rent it to the school corporation, and the school corporation would pay rent each year until they paid for the cost of the building corporation, bond issue. In 1953, the Indiana Supreme Court issued an opinion saying that a building corporation bond issue does not violate the Constitution's prohibition on debt. So in other words, it was a valid and binding way to do this. There's been a transition of how these finances have worked, whereas now I think we are in the best position where the building corporations are made up of patrons in the community that have no economic interest whatsoever in the project. They are unpaid. The last time I did bring them, I was there with, sorry, for funding this one. They are unpaid, and they provide this mechanism because there was a time when the building corporations were actual separate for-profit corporations, and I saw some, going back through files, where they charged rent for the maximum time period even though they had paid for all the costs. They just continued to build a school corporation, and millions of dollars I think were utilized inappropriately that way. But our building corporations now are entirely made up of patrons, again, who do not have any economic interest. All construction contracts are entered into by the school corporation and then nominated by the building corporation. The leases are set up so that even though the building corporation is the owner, the school corporation has sole rights to occupy, maintain the building. They do not have, the building corporation has no right to enter in on the premises. The school corporation maintains insurance. You wouldn't know an operation that was any different than if the school just had it themselves. The other part that is important to look at is that at the end of the term of the lease, the property is to be returned to the school corporation for no cost to the school whatsoever. So when the structure is done, the real estate comes back into the school's name, and there is no cost to the school at that point. The advantages of using a building corporation, probably the strongest one, which you heard the gentleman from Steeple talk about, is you have more control over the sale of the bonds. You can select which underwriter you want to work with, which banker, whereas when you do a general obligation bond, you are required to just publish notice of the sale and take whoever gives you the loan here on that date, rather than looking into restructuring things the way that meets your additional needs. Secondarily, you're stuck with whoever it is that does that. And again, having stability and continuity, a big benefit to the school corporation. Some people would say that it costs more to do a building corporation deal than a general obligation bond issue because you got that extra step in the building court. What I would say to you is there are benefits to hiring a Swiss heritage bond lawyer, who is probably one of the cheapest likes slash frugal people in our bed, because your bond issues are structured with a master trust condenser and a master lease. So unlike some others, every time they do a bond issue, they incur a large amount, in your case, it would be close to $50,000, of real estate expenses for having to have three legitimate appraisers come out and do appraisals on the school corporation. Those cost between $5,000 and $10,000 each. They have title, new title insurance for each time. That's money that is just gone because, in my mind, it's unnecessary, but it's required to comply with real estate in this situation. But to me, it's the school selling to the building corporation to come back to the school. The need for title insurance is wasted money. So again, these are expenses that even though we're using the building corporation, and you may hear from others that those are costs that they have, we don't have those here at Greater Clark because how it's structured is with a master borrowing document and then the amendments to the lease. Going forward, the two resolutions tonight are for amendment to the lease, approving the form of it, and also approving what's called a reimbursement resolution. The reason we have that is from federal tax law. Whatever you do in tax exempt financing, in case you incur any expenses before the budget. in case you incur any expenses before the bonds are actually issued, you have to do a notice that says we may or may not reimburse ourselves from the tax exempt bonds that are issued for them. Most IRS tax rates are based upon someone who used the system and those can be directly traced to the New Jersey Port Authority, who attempted to reimburse themselves for certain expenses that were done in 1946 from a new bond issue around here to now. So that's why we do that. The last thing to look at is if your borrowing structure has been put together in efficient steps. The last steps the school board will have as far as borrowing will be the public hearings on October 27th. And then the four resolutions that we adopt at that time to approve the projects, to approve the actual lease rental agreement, to approve the issuance of bonds, and then to appropriate any funds that might come through the school for this project. So that's our structure. And hopefully I've used English enough that you might use bondies.
Are there any questions to comment for? It's okay.
Who actually controls the building corporation? The patrons?
The patrons do, but once they have their authorization issued of bonds, they at that point have appointed your CFO and superintendent to go through and make any payments under the construction contracts, which you, the school board, have approved.
How are the patrons selected?
They've been people willing to do it. The current patrons that are on there, again, serving without paying, Mr. Bob Pearl, who's been on this for... I don't think I'm... Yes. Mr. Kenny Kavanaugh, Ms. Lisa Givens from Greasy, Emily Oliver Jones, and your own April. Yeah, she's the one that made me bring about us.
So how do those people get selected, I guess is my question.
At various times, they were asked by the superintendent to do that. There is no election. There is no, because this is somebody willing to show up at meetings, whenever this approval is done, and then willing to come in and sign their names multiple times as an officer of the building corporation once the bonds are sold.
I guess where I'm going is where's the oversight other than the school corporation? In other words, how does the public control what goes on with the bond?
Well, again, my point is the building corporation itself, it has one meeting to adopt the sale of the bonds that actually is consistent with your resolutions that you adopt.
Right.
And then at that point, they designated Mark and Laura to do all the steps that would be designated for the building corporation to take. So your answer is, the direct activities are done by Laura and Mark, the building corporation is done as far as the individual officers and members at the time that the bonds are issued.
So does the building corporation actually, they don't actually control the actual construction?
No.
Any of that stuff?
No. They don't take powers of the law. They don't do anything. All those contracts are yours.
Under a previous CFO, I'm going to step on some toes here if I do, I'm sorry. Under a previous CFO, I asked why we never did see pay applications. And I was told it was because the building corporation took care of all that. Now, to Ms. Irving, her bringers, sorry about your question. Credit, she has fund number 710 now on our pay, on our claims report, and it does get into this. So I guess my question would be, in the past, what I was told was not exactly correct, was it? I think the answer is no. You don't understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Built a name.
Do I?
So that way, because you and I have spoke about how this process really works.
Right.
You know, so for the other board members, when the project is defined and we go through the vid process or we go through the design bill, when we define the project in a work contract, it is prudent upon the CFO to bring it before the board so that way you approve the contract. So if the contract's $1 million, you know that $1 million is going to go to that contractor. So that's the initial approval.
Right.
The fund that you're seeing are funds that come into the district under the geo-capacity, which these projects exceed our capacity. Our need exceeds our geo-capacity because it's a percentage of your assessed value minus some of the geo-debt that you have out brings us down to a very small amount. And our needs are bigger than that. Therefore, we have to lean on the building corp. Building corp is subject plus my bond is on the line for the building corp. That's why they named the CFO as the leasor representative. And so when those payments come through, there has to be a very linear check and balance before that money goes out of the bank. And the bank has to also verify that we have met those because the bank is also our trustee, that we've met those steps, such as all these approvals, all of the payments that have gotten the signatures and the payoffs, all of that has to be detailed, that those folks that are responsible have evaluated and promised that the work has been done. So let's go back to the contractors before it even gets to us. Their licenses are on the line. So if they sign up and they've done this work and we find they haven't, you know, we have the insurance policies in place and bond insurances to go and take care of that. So that is kind of the gist of the things that we've talked about, how that money, why it's not sitting on our fund reports.
Well, actually, this month, though, we've got $36,000 that's going to A M L, roughly.
Correct.
For pay application number three for the stadiums at Jeff Eye and Charleston High School.
Correct. Correct.
Right. So that money, that $36,000 comes from?
Should be coming from the bond. However, we're trying to fit in where we can start at least showing you where that's at.
Okay.
But the responsibility is through all of those steps. And that's why, regardless of $22 million, that's why that just doesn't come into our books to sit there. And then you see it on the fund balance report going out.
So it sits in a, it sits in an account that's called?
Trustee's account. And it's controlled by the trustee and the leasor representative, which the CFO and the superintendent, we also have April reviewing our pay offs as well. So, you know, we have those steps.
And I'd like to also add, we have added in the trustee nature that even though they can receive these payment affidavits electronically, if it's more than $100,000, they are required to call and personally confirm that it came from the school corporation. But in that situation, it's a double protection, which I've added in the last couple of years just because there's people who try to cheat and do anything. So that it's added protection.
Why do you look for a cheat?
I'll take this next question, Inc., because it's upfront, I hope nobody does. But none of the trustees that I know of, I mean, I know April. She doesn't have a lot of experience in construction. I know Emily doesn't have very ruling in it. I don't know about Lisa Ken or Bob.
But they're not doing anything with the construction.
Right.
When the construction contracts come in, that is entirely this school board deciding what to do.
Right.
The member, those five members of the board of the building corporation have already designated that everything to be done under those contracts are the school or the representatives being Laura and Mark.
And then?
Those numbers do nothing. They never receive these contracts.
So going further, Mark and Laura don't have a whole lot of experience in construction, meaning that whenever a pay application comes in, Laura, I hope I don't offend you, but when a pay application comes in, how do you know that the seating is not, is 35% done on the stadiums?
So how we've done that, Bill, as we've talked before, first off, you know, being in the business 27 years, you're kind of exposed to that process.
Right.
And incidentally, I'm also the one who had, where somebody got into our trustee's account and stole the money. So our, the district I came from, I'm the one why they have to change those indentures because an electronic payment went to the bank. So I'm very tight on that. So with these projects, we make sure that we hire the best architects because it is on the line that they are going to be doing the project. So that's the first and foremost, okay? Once we do that, I do site visits. We also have a COO who is constantly making sure that they're meeting the criterion of what we've requested for the project to be. So he is monitoring that frequently. His signature is in that mix. As a matter of fact, I don't pay anything until he sees it at any point in time before anything's done. I know when it's going to be done and when it's done, we go see it's done. So they do absolutely monitor that. They have weekly meetings. Chad's on site every day at these constructions. So I would say that this team has a lot of experience through this process.
Again, no offense, Chad, but your education background in education, per your resume on LinkedIn states that your goal was in education, not in construction. So, and I know your experience is mostly in education. And therefore, that's the reason why I have repeatedly asked for our corporation to consider hiring a construction project manager on our payroll that actually would take that load off of you and take a lot of load off of you because they would have, hopefully, 15, 20 years' experience looking at these things on a regular basis. And right now, I don't hear that we have anybody with that kind of experience looking at these things. I mean, maybe I'm wrong. If I am, please correct. I'm sure I'll be corrected.
So with our design build and our design criterion that we have, when you build, when you build out that project and you put the specs together and a design builder is assigned, right? That design builder becomes the project manager and that's who you're dealing with that has to guarantee that all the items are fulfilled through there. So you are, in essence, hiring the project manager within the design builder.
The design, the project manager that we're hiring for the design builder works for the design builder, though. He's also making profit off the project.
Correct.
So therefore, he has an inherent conflict of interest whenever we try to say that, I mean, he has an inherent conflict of interest whenever we try to say that he's going to oversee what the company, he works for our dues.
Well, I disagree because there's regulations that they also have to meet. You know, they have to meet what that criterion outweighed is. They have to, just like anybody else doing a construction project. I mean, if they're going to tell you they're going to build this and you hire them, you personally or professionally, they still have to meet the criteria and specs that you lay out.
And that's guaranteed in contract.
Correct.
Up front.
Correct. Correct.
Probably going to chase somebody down in another state. I see what you're saying.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to put that out there, so we...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
We understand that's your concern. Chad and I have talked about it several times to make sure that our projects are in line with the timing because we have expectation time. So that way, nothing, by all means, nothing, you know, needs to be shortcutted. We also have to maintain a budget. So, you know, it's a lot, it's a, I know that's, you say, taking off of us, but it is us that have that information of the need that needs to get done. So it's very important that Chad is involved in that.
Well, I'm not trying to say you should be involved.
Yeah, I know. I just try to take pressure off of that, but we can handle it.
He has a lot of other things he has to do so.
Right. Right. But we can handle it.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rockwald as well. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, Board of motion.
Who should approve consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Rockwald. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gopie. Questions, comments? Any of the items that the consent agenda?
I have a question.
Yes, any?
On the personnel reports.
Uh-huh.
We've had this discussion all several years, but I just noticed that this one has a whole lot of things that we're going to approve tonight, starting back in July and September and August. And I know we've got some strange times going on, but I just find that to be...
And some of that has to do with our changes in programming at the elementary level in terms of doing interview roles versus going out and competing in other schools. And just exactly what we were going to do moving forward, so.
I'm hoping for, I'm just bringing it up again. It seems like we're moving away from what we tried to do. And in the past, too, we've had a believing kind of, said it was approved by you, preliminary, and kept it up to the board.
As long as they've been cleared through human resources.
Yeah, that's my other point. When it's, when those dates are way back here, have they gone through all of the other?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, that's one thing we do make sure that they've been approved or been cleared through human resources.
Teresa, the two from July were actually already teachers. They were just reassignment, or changes in assignment. So I know that, like, the J J and the, well, Bubba or J J.
Right. They were just changes.
But didn't they change back in July?
April.
Yes.
I can explain that.
Ms. Wesley has it.
Sorry. Dr. Sherman was unaware that, because he had taken someone out of the general classroom and switched within the ELL. Because when you switch between first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, we don't typically take that to the board. He made that assignment this time. He was unaware that we have to do that because of the funding. They're paid out two different funds.
Absolutely.
He was unaware, so he corrected that paperwork with this.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Any other questions, comments, consent agenda?
117. We'll go back to that again. I know that on our claims report, we see it gets very grand where I can go down to looking at core refund charges for a starter or a generator that goes on bus or whatever. Whenever we look at a pay application, we're looking at $36,000 and it says pay application under three and that's it. And I mean, I would know what I'm looking at. I don't know if anybody else would understand it. It's really not that hard. I'll get A708, but A I A703 is pretty straightforward. And would it be possible for us to be able to see those? Or is that something that is under the control of the building corporation only?
If that's the board's desire, we can...
We could easily put those into Google Drive and share that out like we did with Franklin Square.
Right. I mean, that way, just so everybody understands, if you see that, for instance, this pay application is, it may be $112,000, but say it's at 40%, is what they're saying, or even they're saying, I say it's 70%. And you drive by and you look at it and you say, wait a minute, they've got a frame up, but there aren't many seats on it. I don't think it's a 70%. Then it would open up a conversation between a board member that has a question and the individuals that are signing off on this stuff. It just seems like a prudent oversight or maybe a third or fourth set of eyes to look at this.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Thank you, Chad, for that again. Any other questions to come up for?
I would like to do a thing. I have to concur with you, Bill. I think at the beginning, when you guys came on board, you were asking about major concern about purchases and things like that, how things have been done. So to be aware of things, be able to speak of the people. Some of us need to know that, are those who want to know. So I think that's very reasonable that we have a handle on that.
I've had constituents ask me questions. Specifically, I've just had constituents ask me about the, some things we're planning on doing in 2020 or 2021. And you said, well, why are we raising our, keeping the taxes up? Aren't we lowering taxes? I'm trying to explain that. It would help if we could, once, get a little bit more grainy or also...
Once you guys put that in, then basically, you know, any one of us can just pull it because we need it. And to me, that's kind of it. It's clear what those concerns are.
Thank you, everyone. Those approving the 20 consent agenda, signify or say hi?
Aye.
All those opposed. Next is give to buildings. And I didn't warn anybody, so all go ahead and do it. 269344 from the Clark County Sheriff's Department for the Department for New York City. for new videos, which is very important to safety and on this donation to JHI, radio for $1,000. I order motorcycle club in Washington, special needs apartments, 1,300. And there's a couple other there for athletics, Pride and College Go Week. And then Wilson Elementary, cleaning up on those donor choose projects. There's also your program oversight for a total of $9,238.82. I mean, the appropriate is submitted.
Second.
Comments or questions? Those approving, those in favor of approving, second is get to the building, signify, say a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right. Actually, we have nine of them. No one. It's your turn. Look at that, Ms. Gilmaker, right up here. Also, I'd like to say a shout out to Janelle Patrick, our president. She's watching for Flora. She's keeping me updated on all the things she likes and doesn't like. So, all right, Ms. Gilmaker.
All right. Thank you, Board. We've recently received one of our biannual proposed updates for our policies. These policies generally reflect the camera bias of all. The policies are attached in Word docs and I've also provided summaries to the board. Policy updates were shared with our cabinet, so superintendent, director, assistant superintendent, COO, CFO. And I also provided the copy to Dr. Clayton. This is first reading, so there's no action taken today. It's required for 30 days to be in between first and second readings. So I'll be back to first meeting in December for final reading and adoption.
Thank you, Ms. Gilmaker. Any questions, comments, board on the first ratings of the ELL updates?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Peterson. Is that your third chip, or you're not one of the same?
Are there other organizations besides Word docs or ELL that does, that would provide you the same information? Because I know there have been internal discussions about whether or not the ELL is a good idea. I'll give you one. So.
ISBA provides some. It's not as extensive as the ELL. They do not provide administrative guidelines, and it's not on a regular schedule. So occasionally, ISBA will put out, like during COVID, they provided a couple of, shared a couple of policies with actually the same policies that the ELL had proposed as well. So it's not as frequent.
If you were to have to do this, how much extra time would it take you?
That would be much too.
I guess, Ms. Gilmaker, we used to do it before she was here. And I first went up as a superintendent's assistant. So that was 10 years ago. We did it. You talk out, you need one person and their boss solely devoted to policies. I mean, Ms. Gilkey would even have a clue of some of it because she was back on, you know, one month at a time. You honestly would have to take a lot of time yourself as board members to sit in meetings.
Well, I'm on a subject to review.
Not even read them, just the creation, the everything.
Right.
So just to review these policies, cross-check the citations and the laws, see what our options are and what we should choose, and then to sit down with the ELL and make those changes or adopt the changes, select the different options. I don't keep track of my time anymore. So I'm not part of the practice, but I can tell you how many days where it goes into just getting it here for first reading. And that's just reviewing what's given to me, reaching, sharing it with everybody else. So to also then take the job and the task of creating the policies as the law change each year.
Right.
Yes.
I just, I'm not opposed to doing something different if we had to. I mean, if that's what, you know, if those discussions finally ever came to. But I just, it appears to me that it's maybe expensive, but if you're going to do something, you do it right, which hopefully they are, then.
We don't adopt, like to a point in adoption. There's a lot of behind the scenes, meeting with the ELL, meeting with our cabinet, or sharing with cabinet. I do schedule, depending on what the update may be, I'll schedule one-on-one meetings with the captain over that's maybe over students or our nurses. So, you know, meet with Tricia Stengel. Or if it's just HR, you know, we've got a huge one anyway for Title IX. I, you know, met with Tricia Holland, had her attend a seminar on that legal. So it's more than just the ELL giving me the updates and me saying, sure, we'll sign off on it. There are lots of options to choose. And then a lot of looking back to see what was, did the law change? And do I need to update everybody on any requirement, any training?
It sounds like it's a reasonable value.
I believe so.
About two years ago, I met with folks from ISBA and Jill Wilson from Clark. So I think, yes, they were there. And they were kind of looking at this exact thing, you know. Most everybody has the ELL in the state, and they're looking at whether or not they could provide this service, a more robust service than they're providing us now at a fee, which, you know, and we kind of gave our testimony to that. Because I've had to spend it to the ELL and other corporations. And I said it was like, hey, we can now. So I don't know where that is. Do you know?
I don't. I don't know, you know, where Julie would be without just seconds with I RIA. I know that, I think their goal was to get feedback and see if it was something that would be, you know, interested, would need to have, my understanding that we need to have quite a few corporate directors to justify hiring, wanting to take care of the policies. And also, they were not interested in providing administrative guidelines. So I think that was something that maybe some of the school corporations said would not be interested in because they also use the ELL for administrative guidelines. Just a quick.
I was just, Ms. Allen, we like Bill. Not to urge you in any kind of way, but you could miss some. So with the ELL, you shouldn't have to worry about that.
It would be a whole-time job because you have to follow each new law that comes down and then create the policy.
Right. It's a lot of work.
Plus, on the flip side, there's a lot of stuff that cuts from the ELL that you don't need.
We don't necessarily.
They give you everything.
Through it all. It's.
You've got federal, state, county, I guess, and then city laws that you have to deal with potentially.
Just for, but just for our board policies, you know, it just depends. It could be federal, so discrimination would become, you know, we have federal state, and then there are certain state laws that we have to follow that all reflected in our ELL.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Your loss, Gilmaker. Next item on the agenda is 2021 school, regular school board meeting scheduled for Sunday by Mr. Lawton. Great. I said we ready.
All right. Good evening, Board. You know, I wanted to make the recommendation to the board that we approve the meeting schedule for board meetings starting in January for the next calendar year. Very similar to what we've done this year, except a little adjustment between September and October. They're having two meetings in September and one in October. The other adjustment is if we start at six p.m., seven a.m. So that being said, I can make the recommendation to the board to approve the meeting schedule and start time for the meeting starting in January.
Thank you, Mr. Lawton. Board to have a question?
And then approve the 2021 board schedule. Present.
Thank you, Mr. Rockwalter. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Questions coming? All those in favor of approving the 2021 regular board school meeting schedule? Signify, say a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Number three is the equipment of the library board representative.
Yes. Another request to the library board recommending that we appoint to the Jefferson ville township public library board trustees to Bethany Morrell to finish Margaret Shetty's term, which will expire June 30th, 2022. Many of you probably knew Margaret Shetty, knew that she passed away, a great lady to work with. I'd be recommending the board to make this appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Lawton. Board to have a question?
Madam President, I move that we approve the appointment to the Jeffersonville Township Public Library Board trustees for Bethany Morrell to finish Ms. Shetty's term, which will expire June 30th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Thank you, Ms. Gilkey. Questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the appointment of the library board representative? Signify, say a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Permission to advertise the request for additional appropriations for the current 2020 budget.
Look at there. She's right there, ready to go. That's how you do this one. Hi, good to you. So I come before the board. We spoke about this during the budget presentation. Now, we talked about the 2021 budget, and you know there's a lot of influence of what goes on in 2020. We talked about deficit financing, included to come with cost reduction plans. But we still have to finish out this year in a respectable manner. You have, over the course of the year, over time, an education fund, you spent between 63 and 64 million dollars. The budget last year was approved at 60 million. We need to get that in because we have not reduced. So you're going to have to live the way that you have, but you will get in line with your means for next year. So that is the effects of your education fund. Your operation fund then suffers because you know that you transfer money from the education out of the operations. You also are short there in your appropriations, so I'll be asking for that, as well as fixing the pension debt payments and the debt payments. Remember, we will be using our cash balance in debt and we will be transferring $100,000 on pension. I am respectfully requesting that I advertise to the public that we will be doing, you know, as taxpayers, requesting, seeking these additional appropriations and asking for permission to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Board to have a question?
Madam President, I move that we approve the advertisement for the question of appropriations for the current 2020 budget.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Clayton. Questions, comments, board? All those.
I have one question.
Go for it.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hopper, would it be fair to say that if our constituents and our parents in the Grand Park County School Corporation ask for the school corporation to do more, that those costs are one of the things that helps drive this? In other words, whenever they say, I want my student to have a brand-new brand instrument, and I want the school to pay for it, or I want my students to have new computers, I want the school to pay for it.
Right. So that question's going to be answered yes and no. But let me explain my name. The, I'm just kidding. The yes is that we are stewards of providing education to our students. So your expenses that have come through in the district have been at a certain pace. What has happened is that the pace of reduction has not kept up with the legislative reductions that have come into place. I mean, your revenues have been affected tremendously. Enrollment is one, so up or down has an impact. The actual formula itself, how it's calculated, has an impact, which has reduced over time since 2009. Remember how we talked about how that shifted out from being a taxable fund over to a state-supported fund, okay? And then you have, your circuit breaker is number three, which has probably one of the largest impacts that all school districts have.
What is a circuit breaker?
Okay. A circuit breaker is what is called a tax cap. And there's three levels, 1%, 2%, 3%, homestead, rentals, and large corporations. Okay? So nobody theoretically should pay in totality, not just for the school, but also your other municipalities, a maximum 1% of the homestead, by the homestead tax. So what you used to be able to do, when you taxed from general fund and all your other funds, remember when you had capital projects and your bus replacement, your transportation, when you taxed for that, there was a maximum tax already in place. But when the state took that money down to the state level, remember, we increased our sales tax from 5% to 7%. Remember that? That kind of contributed to help funding education. That's how we sold that. We being Indiana Hoosiers voted to have that done. So that was one. Then you had a stimulus package that bridged you from the time that you were taxing to the time you transitioned into the formula. So when you hear about tuition support, there's a state budget that they can only release out to schools. So all schools have a same foundation amount, which that was not true in years past. Some schools had foundations so incredibly high where, and that tended to be your, or poverty schools, okay? So they had to transition down to a foundation. So they have been taking money away and giving it to those who did not benefit to equalize that foundation amount. In addition, you have complexity. That is your free reduced rate. So what they've been doing to also level out or give schools more money is they reduce the complexity in that formula. On top of the fact that because the district has engaged into our academies, we are able to offer a fantasy CTE program. So that helps with revenue in your formula. Your special education comes out of there, your honors kids come out of there. So that is the formula in totality. This district probably receives about $6,000 per student as revenue from the state to hit the education fund. And all that revenue goes there, and then you have to disseminate out money to go to your operations. Remember the graph, the sheet that I showed you where this was your general fund?
Right.
And a portion of it was considered operations?
Yep.
A portion of it was considered instruction. That total amount you should be able to support no matter what. So when we separate that, all the money goes up here to instruction, and I have to pull that money out and put it into operations to cover that traditional, like your payroll people. I mean, we have talent, right? So we have to still support them. In addition to that, what we did, we took capital projects, transportation, bus replacement, and also threw it in there. So now you've got property tax that comes in there, which is capped for the circuit breaker, with a circuit breaker. That affects your operations.
I appreciate the explanation. I wanted it to be simplified because I had constituents ask me those questions.
Tax gap. It's the maximum tax on your home that you would pay.
And I wanted them to understand that while they may think that we're overspending in some areas, those things are, it's another reason I brought up the ELL is because if somebody goes and looks at it, which some have, and they come back, well, why are you paying for this? It's because if we didn't, as Renee pointed out, we would be hiring another person for anywhere between 60,000 and 80,000 dollars a year total cost. And therefore, I want our large constituents to understand that we're doing the best we can, but we have to work with.
Correct. Yeah, because that comes from the higher constituents. That money comes from, and that jurisdiction is out of all of our control.
Right.
It's in the voters' control and the legislators', and that's how come we've gotten to that point. And yes, we understand that our kids deserve, absolutely. So we are making plans over the course of time so our kids deserve. So every decision that team is making, such as making good air quality in our buildings, we are looking elsewhere and making sure that we stay within a reasonable amount of borrowing to make those things happen. So please pressure off your capital plan because you don't have capital money due to circuit break.
And educationally, whenever we're doing the CTE or what, as I understand it, would be traditionally what I was told was okay.
Okay, yeah.
Right? So whenever we bring those things on board and we help steer our students into those things, and I suppose that's also science, technology, STEM, science, technology.
Correct, right. Some of those do fall underneath that, yes.
Right. So that helps also bring in money from the state that we wouldn't get if they weren't, if we didn't have the student, or we didn't have the ability to give that to students.
Correct. Absolutely, absolutely.
All right.
You got it, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of approving to advertise the request for additional appropriations for the current budget. Signify, say a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. And she's up again with the approval of the resolution for form of amendments to lease and preliminary execution.
So as Mr. Thomas Peterson described, this is step one in your process. Your last board meeting allowed us to be ready to submit an advertisement to the newspapers because of timing. So this is the official approval of preliminary execution. So I recommend the board to approve this process.
Thank you. Board to have a motion? Board, do you have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we approve the resolution for form amendment to lease and preliminary execution, resolution for reimbursement for the 2020 bonds based to building improvement.
I am. Thank you, Thomas. Thank you, Dr. Plank.
Thank you.
It was our Dr. Plank, and he, that's how good we are. I missed you too. Dr. Plank had a second. Right, you second it.
I did.
Okay. I have enough of my ears. I got it. Going back here.
No, we didn't.
Questions or comments?
All those in favor of approving the resolution for the form of amendment to lease and preliminary execution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And, one more, two more?
Two more.
Two more resolutions to transfer fund from education fund to operations fund.
I unfortunately do want to take a moment on this one. Sorry.
Do you have three minutes?
Got it. So when you approve the 2020 budget, there's that line there that indicates how much money gets transferred out. You also saw that in the 2021. Remember, we're talking about, translates to be about $9.5 million. You always estimate what you can put in there. And of course, the cash that's available does drive that. So for this particular year, to stay consistent with how that was handled, every time, I will come to you and we have this resolution that needs to go in, I do cash flows to see when we can transfer that money. So this $2.5 million is just a portion of the $9.5 million that is on our level. You already transferred $1.5 earlier, so we have little ways to go. But, when you get ready to adapt the 2021 budget, the resolution that came through from ISBA, IASV, Principal Associations, Pretend Association, State Work Council, DMGA, they all met together when this transaction, when this transition of separating those funds got together, and they provided a resolution. And the resolution will state that the board recognizes the $9.5 million that you'll see in '21, but authorizes the CFO to transfer those funds, okay? So you don't have to keep signing $5,000s. I always ask for five copies, you'll be real sick of me signing resolutions. But you will always see the transfer on your board document report, okay? But I put a stipulation in there that I can't wait once a year to do it. I can do it at least on an every-six-month basis. So you'll know that consistently, you'll be looking in June, okay? That's the best time to do it. Well, if we run the funds into the red, it just happens, then in June, we pick those right up. But remember, we'll be borrowing a TAW, and then we'll carry over and try to deal with that, right? So I tell you that you'll be able to see it on the document after June, that's the most efficient way to do it. And I would comment, I always inform you that if I feel like that we're too low, that I'm going to do it, so that way you know what to afford on the document. So you'll get to approve it that way as well. So you'll be approving the budget, the resolution in '21, and on the document. So there's three approvals for that transfer. So to come to you for additional resolutions, I don't feel that's efficient, but we will finish it out this year. That's how we're done. So I recommend the board approving the transfer.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Board, do you have a motion?
Move to approve the 2020 resolution to transfer funds from the operations fund to the operations.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the resolution to transfer funds from education operations fund for 2020, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And last, on your list, not ours, is the food services, will agree with the furnished food services for Hartland Hubs at Bright Horizons.
Thank you. As we've talked about, our food service fund being a concern, we are making diligent efforts to try and generate revenue. So our food service director, Natalie, has engaged with Bright Horizons. They have this program called Hartland Hubs. We are essentially a satellite program for them. Right now, because of the subsidy program, we don't have to actually charge them dollars. We will be reimbursed from the lunch program federally. However, we will charge to deliver. Now, this is going to save us no, but this is our first step to do that. We serve about 30 meals a day, and our cafeteria ladies are happy to do that. I recommend the board allow us to engage with Hartland Hubs at Bright Horizons for the 2021 school year.
Thank you. Board, do you have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead.
Madam President, I'm moving to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the food service school agreement to furnish food service for Hartland Hubs at Bright Horizons for 2020, '21.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Buckwalter. Questions or comments? All those in favor of approving this food service, the school agreement to furnish food service for Hartland Hubs at Bright Horizons for 2021, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Look at you, ready to go. That's so exciting. Bus addendums for Route 7C and 8C.
Thank you. Good evening, board. Before you, you have some information about two bus addendums for Route 7C and 8C, the C meaning the Charlestown area. Those are with LRV, which is Larry Blackwell, and Mr. Deshaun Ragland. We began those as a direct connection with our choice area, the Crystal Springs and that area where we're going up and giving students a choice to go to the Charlestown area schools. Because of that and not having bus drivers at the start of the school year, it did result in an addendum. We've now acquired different options. We've actually moved one of our contracted routes to Jeffersonville, mileage-wise, up to the Charlestown area. Therefore, that's allowed us to terminate those addendums. So tonight, before you, I'm asking for approval for the addendums. And you can see the totals there, one being $3,562.50, the other being $712.50.
Thank you, Mr. Shank. Board, do you have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the bus addendums for Route 7C and 8C.
Thank you, Dr. Plank. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Questions or comments?
I'll check for Peter Ruffins, because I had some conversation with him. Make sure that they understand when they're doing that, that they want to maybe get paid for that. Other than that, they're going to get paid.
Absolutely.
That's what I told him.
You may not know, Mr. Shank, but maybe Mr. Luth, do we know what kind of results we're getting if we're having, if we're gaining students, or are we staying even, or do we know, or?
Well, when you look at our ADM count overall as a district, we're up about 185 students, which is very good compared to the districts around us. And a lot of that has been a result of, number one, keeping students in that, you know, area within our district and not going to other places, but also, you know, some of the routes that we created up by Hanover, Henryville, Perry Crossing, Clarksville, have brought in some students. So we feel good about, you know, for us to be up in enrollment in other districts around us, I think pretty much it's unanimous of the districts around us, their enrollment has gone down this year. But we're up 185.
Sorry for them, but good for us.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to say one thing. Dr. Shank? I'm glad that you used a contractor for that, because you went 25 days, and I know that you would have made that corporation route after '21. So it's good that you chose to do that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Thomas. Any other questions? All those who are approving the following, where the two bus route addendums for 7C and 8C, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And you have another one, approval of IDM Volkswagen mitigation trust, school bus matching grant, propane trust specification.
Yes, ma'am. So if the board remembers correctly, last year, we were successful with round one, and this is Volkswagen mitigation, this is through IDM. There was a little bit more than $2 billion that was put into that fund, and now they're dispersing that in ways that we think may be up to four different cycles. First cycle, we were successful, and we received a $25.75 matching grant, and we bought eight, we traded in and actually had to destroy eight of our old diesel buses for eight new diesel buses. We have those in operation, they go out every single day for us. Round two, we really felt compelled to try and get creative, and we felt like having received, we were the only district south of Columbus that received round one funding. Knowing that, we decided to write a grant for a trade-off of eight diesel buses for eight cleaner-burning propane buses. So what you have before you is a successful grant. We received $224,000 and change through this second phase, and it was approved. And what you now have is, what I'm asking is to approve the $224,690 through the IDM Phase II, that again, that is a $75.25 matching grant for eight propane buses. The timeline, we still would like to take at the next meeting. And you'll all have a rundown of all of the bus through the Central and Educational Service Center. We spec those buses out, you'll see how those buses have come in through that quantitative purchasing process, and then I'll be asking for approval at a future meeting for the actual purchase of those propane buses. But for tonight's purposes, what I'm asking is that you officially accept those grant funds and the amount of $224,690, which will then allow us to forward price those buses out. And at a future meeting, probably at the end of October, here this month, I'll be bringing you the rundown of that pricing.
Thank you, Mr. Shank. Board, do you have a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve the IDM Volkswagen mitigation trust, school bus matching fund, and propane bus specification.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Thank you, Dr. Plank. Questions or comments?
Tell me about propane buses as compared to diesel and gas.
Yeah, absolutely. So, they've come along.
Just a little.
Sure. I'll give you the reader's digest version. They have a little bit more torque, meaning in hills in southern Indiana, we're not going to have to worry. Early on, 15 years ago, when propane started to catch weight in this area of the nation, liquid starts, the propane was more liquid instead of a vapor, and you had issues with cold starts. Now, the research certainly proves that they fixed those issues, so we have no concerns about cold starts in our area. Distances that they can run is comparable to how far they can run on a diesel tank. The only issue that we would have, in my mind, for those of you who are wondering how we're going to fill up those propane buses, we'll do that just like a homeowner would, you know, we'll contract that out. Obviously, propane is much, much cheaper, we receive federal rebates, so we'll be down in the 70 cent a gallon range to operate these buses. And we'll contract and bid that out. And they'll, part of that will be not to have infrastructure, not to have a propane tank sitting on the property. But until we get, maybe as we grow that fleet of propane, and certainly that will be a need, but moving forward over the next couple of years, it would be no different than having to haul some urban propane, having to bring a truck out. We'll just have that on a weekly cycle and top those buses off.
Thank you.
And they're much, obviously, much cleaner burning and quieter.
Okay, you're right.
Shank, you...
Ted, what, you need to wait your turn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Holmes.
Do, I, from my past experience 15 years ago, like you said, propane didn't give quite the same efficiency. I don't think it's going to be as many BTUs per gallon as diesel does, so therefore it uses a little bit more. What's the actual ratio on that? Do you know, I mean, compared to it? I mean...
Well, it's still going to be a certain huge cost savings. And what I actually have is, at the next meeting, I'm still in my thunder, I'll bring you an Excel spreadsheet that'll show you the long-term cost of every one of those buses and what that compares to. Yeah, you're exactly right, you know, we're a traditional bus, diesel bus typically six, maybe eight on the open road miles to the gallon. Propane, we're seeing as about fours to seven.
They, you, they, I think I also remember, Mr. Plank managed, Dr. Plank managed it better, they have less maintenance issues too, don't they, because they burn cleaner?
That's right.
Thank you, second. Dr. Plank?
Thank you very much. Let me ask you all, on the, you looked at the prices, like from Bluebird, IC, and Thomas. Now, you were just giving us some type of idea of what base is. I'd like for you also to take in consideration the, for maintenance, or warranty work. For example, is Bluebird still down on the other side of the Everton? We would have to take the buses there. IC, we are in...
North of Indianapolis is their main, they also have the service tag that comes down here.
Okay. So we need to take all that into consideration. I know past experiences that we didn't get to get a service at Bluebird, so, not that we're not better. And Bill does answer one of your questions. I know that a couple of years ago, when we're talking about this, it was like 50 miles to the gallon on propane, but now they're saying that for a tank, you get up to 400 miles. So, take consideration of it, yeah.
The engineering behind this is very impressive.
Have we, have you thought about, would it be feasible for us, since we have propane tanks in New Washington, to base those trucks, those buses out of New Washington? Or would that, is that not a feasible issue?
Well, New Washington, we're all contracted minus special education routes. The special education routes do originate here from the Transportation Service Center and then go into the New Washington area. But all of our current bus routes that are running are with contractors. These will be our buses. Now, the contractor were to, to see if they had advantages of running propane, then that may be something to take, would want to look at, or they could possibly fuel there.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Dr. Plank, I just wanted to say congratulations on submitting not one, but two successful grant allocations.
Thank you. We're assigned, and we're going to go after round three as well.
Yes.
All right, all those in favor of accepting the grant, the IDM Volkswagen mitigation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two public comments this evening. I'm not a judge of items. Your name is called, please come to the podium, say your name and your address. You will have three minutes. Renee will set a timer. He will be warned in 30 seconds. When the timer goes off, please put a sentence. And first is Joseph Collins. Okay? Mr. Keith Freeman?
Keith Freeman. Address is 615 Montmorel, Brooklyn, Indiana. Here today to really ask a favor, and that is to not forget about the school zone signs or lack thereof around Franklin Square Elementary. The school has been, at least the exterior, has been finished for, I'd probably say, almost all of the year. And of course, we are pretty much well underway to school this year. But there are still no signs, there are no street markings that say school zone. And if you look at the surrounding area, there's none there either. Now, the importance of that is, it's a school safety issue. Safety for kids, and they negate the car-to-car traffic accidents, what studies show that. So every time, or every day that we go without those, it's basically just a risk of either a child or car-to-car collisions causing traffic jams in that area. And the areas are already pretty congested. If you haven't seen it during the school day, it is. And plus, the courthouse down there is a lot of business that flows through, especially those student receptions. So my question is, how long does it take to get that remedied? I understand that signs have been ordered, but, you know, it's October. The school has been open since July, and we went back. The school's been finished since, I think, the exterior, at least, was finished in January of the year. How long does it take to remedy? And the cost of the signs, if that was ever a, I mean, I understand that it paid for, and of course, that's in conjunction with also the city and this, our school corporation. But I'm hoping that wasn't an hindrance in the length of time that's taken to get that done. I mean, it's October, and the signs costing $5,000, I really question that, I mean, is that a need or is that a want? I mean, we need school zone signs. I think that's a definite need, I think, you know, real. And I don't know how much of that figure is, you know, the GCCS paying it versus the city, I don't know. But that's a huge cost that doesn't necessarily make sense. Signs don't really cost much. Painting, you know, the word "school" on the ground doesn't cost that much. I'm pretty sure, you know, we cannot decide a weekend. We didn't have anything to do on the first Saturday in May anyway. But why does it take this long to get something like that remedied? And I want to ask that question, and I also just want to say, don't forget about it. I understand that everybody's busy. I understand that this board is definitely doing the best job it can during this pandemic. But just for the safety of those students, I ask that you don't forget about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is time for board comments, questions, requests.
Nothing, thank you, Ms. Perkins. Well, um, I do appreciate your comments, but, um, and I know, Mr. Shank, it's, but functions that were down this way did. And, um, we did do a four-way stop. So it kinda slows traffic down there. And, um, they finally put up the four-way stop signs that have the lights that turn on because the others weren't good and the good people zoom right through them. So, um, that process is being, um, worked on. But again, you're correct, um, it's in connection with the city. We can't block their paint or put up sign, the city has to do that. And they're cooperating with this, but it's just small. But thank you.
Ms. Perkins.
No comment.
Thank you, Ms. Rick Walter.
I just wanna say thank you to teachers, if, if there's any watching, I'm sure there probably are, just, I know it's hard with some of you in double duty and all that. Thank you very much for continuing to work hard for our kids.
Thank you.
Mr. Freeman, I want to thank you for bringing that, uh, to our attention again. I know that, uh, Shank has been working back up the city. Um, I would like to thank the CFO... Or, did I say the right CFO?
Yeah, yeah.
I wanna thank you for the education that you provide and the information that is asked for. I, I really hate hearing you stop. Because it just seems like you're so...
Yeah, won't you hear that?
You're watching online. I'll, I'll go back and watch it online. But I do appreciate that. And I know that Bill, you know, I wanna thank Bill for all the questions that he's been asking tonight, that you're very meaningful, so. And I thank everyone for coming up.
Yes, all you. Thank you, Dr. Clayton. So, Dr. Shank, if one wanted to call the city to, um, ask about, like, when the signs might be out.
Yeah, I know the, the cores have been drilled, you know, in the sidewalks where they're gonna install those. And I know they spec those out, so, um, as far as the timeline, I don't know exactly how long it takes to get those in. But yeah, immediately, like, you know, kind of brought to our attention and going, they wanted to take it to the Board of Public Works, which has the authority in the City of Jefferson to paint on, paint a roadway or put a sign on a roadway or lower a speed limit, raise a speed limit. So I know it's already been heard for the Board of Public Works. Uh, and according to Kevin Orland, uh, should be any day now. And they did, like Mrs. Perkins said, they did change that two-way in mechanics core to a four-way.
Okay.
And then we, you know, we audited that daily, uh, when it was initially brought up. Uh, I had Gary Green, you know, who was one of our safety school specialists. Gary positioned himself out there, and Officer Anderson is there directing traffic and, and working with those students on a, on a daily basis, both in the mornings and the afternoons as well. Of course, appreciate all the work that, that all the Jeffersonville Police Department does to, to ensure the safety of our kids. But we'll stay on it, hopefully soon.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. All right.
All right, a couple items I wanna talk about. First of all, I wanna thank the board, good to see everyone again tonight. Uh, also, wanna thank Mr. Hawkins for the questions he asked about our facility projects and the oversight there. I do hope, you know, as we move into year two of our facility plan, that, you know, the board will, will grow confidence in how we're handling those things. Um, I think using a different delivery method will help streamline things and make it an easier process to manage. Um, I have confidence in our team to manage those projects. Um, I think as we grow as a team, you know, with, with Dr. Shank in the COO role, Laura in the CFO, CFO role, myself, you know, growing as a student, I think, you know, we'll manage these projects well and gain your confidence in that regard. I, I also wanna comment, you know, just on, uh, our facility projects in general. I know there's always a concern out there about the tax rate and assessed value and taxes. But I, I just wanna go back to the fall of 2019, when I came into this role and went out into the community, each of our communities, and, and talked about, you know, the needs that we have in our facilities. You know, and it's, it's extensive, it's an extensive list of needs that we have in this district in terms of facility improvements. And we saw that from the 2014 study, well, I think we'll see that again when, when we get the new study from Lancer Beatty. You know, so we made a commitment to keep that tax rate at $1.10, you know, knowing that our assessed value will go up, hopefully, as, as things happen here in our district, which will allow us to do some projects and do some improvements, you know, within our district. Which we've already seen, you know, this year with, with some athletic improvements and some other things throughout the district, which have been fantastic. You know, so I, I hope people understand that, is that, you know, we have a lot of work that needs to be done. Um, our way of doing that in the school world is pretty limited. It's either doing it this way, where we set a tax rate and hope our assessed value goes up, uh, or raise taxes, or do a referend. You know, and none of those are real popular. And a lot of other government entities don't have to follow that, that, that pathway to improve their facilities. So I hope people can understand that, that we're trying to do the right thing for kids, uh, we're trying to improve our facilities. Uh, we want people to drive around our buildings and say, hey, that looks nice, that's where I wanna send my kid. So I just, just wanted to remind people that, you know, we've talked about, you know, setting that tax rate. And our goal is to keep it there at $1.10, you know, especially if our assessed value is going up. Uh, and we have a tremendous need throughout this district, there's no doubt about that. We have some very, very old buildings that need a lot of work. Uh, the other thing, um, that I wanted to discuss real quick, two other things. One is the calendar update. I know a lot of you are getting questions in the community about, uh, the second semester calendar. Uh, we intend to bring the second semester calendar to the board on October 27th, um, for you guys to approve. Uh, we're wrapping up a couple of things and we'll, we'll share with the board that calendar here in the next week or so. Uh, then we'll talk to the teachers, so, discuss with the teachers association and be ready to bring it to the board on the 27th. Uh, that should give parents in our community plenty of notice, uh, to plan for the second semester. So that, that will be coming for the next board meeting. And then the other thing I wanted to update on, just some data from, uh, you know, what's going on in the district in regards to COVID, and, and so where we're at. You each have a packet here that shows some data in terms of, uh, enrollment, in terms of what percentage of students are in-person versus virtual. I will tell you that that trend is moving, the trend line is moving higher for in-person. Uh, we're up, you know, to about 70% of our students now in-person. Nine of our schools are now at 75% or higher in-person. We have, uh, I would guess we had about 500 students come back to in-person learning here at the end of the ninth week, going into the second time. So I think that trend will continue going into the second semester. Uh, one of the things you see here is, especially at the elementary level, that data's higher as far as in-person versus the secondary level. Um, I think there's various reasons for that, in terms of, uh, students at the secondary level being able to handle the virtual learning a little easier. Um, also, you have an athletic piece to that. You know, one of the things that people are seeing throughout the state is a lot of athletes are choosing the virtual learning piece, so that they don't get quarantined, so they can still play on Friday night. Uh, 'cause if they're sitting in a classroom and happen to get, be sitting by somebody that ends up positive, now they gotta be quarantined for two weeks and they can't play for two weeks. Uh, so that's just a little thing that has happened, you know, not just in greater part throughout the state. You know, so, some good data there. Uh, if you go on further back, uh, you'll see that, uh, you know, where we are currently with staff. We have 19 staff that are currently quarantined, and that's classified, uncertified staff. Since the start of the year, we have had 28 positive cases as far as staff since the start of the year. When you look at the number of staff we have and the percentages there, that's pretty good. I mean, uh, it's pretty good. And thankfully, I can still say that, you know, out of our staff that have tested positive, and none of, none of them have had to be hospitalized or anything like that. You know, and, uh, you know, there's a few that hit them pretty hard, you know, knocked them down a little bit, and they didn't feel very good. I think they're starting to bounce back, but thankfully, none of our staff have had to been hospitalized. When you get into the student cases, uh, we've quarantined just a little over 700 students. We've had 31 positive cases. And once again, those numbers are pretty good, when you look at the number of students we have, uh, and the percentage. You know, things are going well, we feel like things are going well. Principals, teachers, students, uh, parents are doing the right thing in terms of wearing masks and following our policies and procedures. You know, and, and just a reminder, uh, you know, we have e-learning this week. Uh, then basically we have two weeks of in-person instruction. Uh, then that week, first week of November, Election Week, that's an e-learning week, except for Election Day, there is no, no school on Election Day. Teachers are in for professional development and parent-teacher conferences. Uh, but that, the rest of that week is e-learning. Then we have two more weeks after that, and then, uh, of in-person, then we get to Thanksgiving. So our last day for this semester, as far as in-person instruction, is coming up pretty quickly. November 20th is the last day for in-person instruction, 'cause after November 20th, all students go to e-learning. Those two days before Thanksgiving break, and then the week after Thanksgiving break. And then we wrap up the semester that first week of December. So, you know, we feel good about where we're at, where we're going. You know, our biggest worry probably is, obviously, we don't want staff and students to become, uh, impacted by COVID. Uh, the other biggest worry is, you know, just making sure our students stay on top of their grades, stay engaged, especially our high school students that have to earn credits and stay on track to graduate. You know, and that's a huge, uh, issue right now throughout the state, is those kids that are in the virtual world, you know, making sure that they're doing the work and earning their credits and staying on track. So just wanted to give you a quick update.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Yes. Um, I'd like to hopefully thank JFIA for their gracious invitation for us to come out to their, uh, football game. And I've heard lots and lots of folks saying how beautiful that stadium is. And, uh, they're really, really...
Really nice, yeah. Don't forget we're at Charlestown High this Friday.
I know.
Dress worn, yeah.
Sweatshirts.
That's what I was getting at. Okay. Um, I think all of that done, and that dusted, I need a motion for a chairman.
Who's the chairman?
Thank you, Dr. Clayton. Second, thank you, Ms. Perkins. I don't want, I was just... All those in favor of chairman's say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thanks, guys.